Right here. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Okay. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the uh, May two thousand twenty-four zoning board appeals meeting. My name is Kelly Donovan. I'm the chair of this board. For those of you who have never attended one of our meetings, I'll quickly explain how the meeting is conducted. First, we'll ask the applicant to come down to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and go through your uh, application for variance, or your project or both. We'll probably have some questions for you. There'll be some uh, question answer. Uh, after that's done, the floor will be open for anyone who would like to speak in favor or against the proposed project or variance. Once everyone's had an opportunity to speak, public hearing will be officially closed and no new testimony will be taken. After the public hearings have been held, the board will deliberate and make a decision on each case. Public will be welcome to stay through the deliberations, but again, no public input is permitted at that point. For those applicants wishing or who wish not to say through the deliberations, planning department staff will be available tomorrow with the board's decisions. Zoning Board of Appeals is a five-member board. Tonight, we have four members present. That constitutes a quorum. I will now call the roll. Mr. Matzo.
Present.
Mister, uh, excuse me, Ms. Mucci. Mister Landers.
Present.
Mister Donovan, present, and Miss Resonetti is excused. We had minutes. We have minutes in there. Did you guys get a chance to look them over from last month?
Yeah, that was April ninth.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for April ninth.
Okay, could I have a second? Thank you, and all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, we have, I think, two cases on our agenda tonight. And uh, can we start already? Okay, uh, the first case is a holdover from last month. It's uh, Centerline Communications LLC, thirty Brown Street, an area variance for the construction of a one hundred ten foot tall telecommission telecommunications tower where sixty-five is the maximum height, with a fifty-nine foot setback from the nearest property line where a minimum of one hundred ten feet is required in the high-two light and medium industrial district. Welcome back. Did you push the button? It's, you should get a green light. We get. Tito's on it.
Tito gave him the girl. Uh, good evening, board. Uh, my name is Jeff Twitty. I'm an attorney with Nixon Peabody here tonight on behalf of City Switch and AT&T. Uh, business address is thirteen hundred Clinton Square, Rochester, New York.
Thank you for coming back and yep.
My name is Brenda Blast Lewis. I'm a site acquisition consultant with Centerline Communications, and I submitted or prepared a lot of the materials for the application.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, both for coming back, and I will uh, remind everybody where we stood at the end of the last month. Um, we had gotten into the public hearing and uh, uh, we had some more questions for the applicant, some clarification, some documentation we were looking for. So we had left the uh, this, this case in the open status. Is that how you guys remember it?
That is correct. That's how we remember it.
And uh, do I need to do anything else other than uh, other than that to remind people it's still open? Okay. All right, then. We did have a few questions for you regarding the uh, the setup. If you have any feedback for us, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Uh, so I think where we left off with this board was similar to where we left off with the planning commission last month, and that was with questions about what would happen in the very unlikely case of a tower failure. Um, so we submitted on May second, um, additional exhibits to our application that included both a diagram and a letter, you know, kind of explaining how the tower would collapse in the case of a tower failure, and it would break at about sixty feet up high on the tower. And as a result, the fall zone radius wouldn't be the full one hundred and ten feet of the tower. It would be closer to fifty feet as shown uh, on those additional uh, materials that we submitted.
Did that pile have a specific name?
It has not a specific name. The exhibits are U and V.
Is in base camp, it's thirty Brown Street supplemental materials.
Thank you very much.
It's the supplemental material.
Let's see it. Give it a look now. Got it. I know some of the neighbors had questions about that. In addition to the members of the board that had questions, I don't know if the neighbors got a um, a copy of any of that. Did they get a copy of it? With, or is it just part of this, the case materials? Okay. Well, I can verify to the, to the neighbors that are here, um, the diagram shows just what you were just describing, roughly the fifty-foot um, point where it breaks off. We had some other questions regarding uh, power outputs, I believe. And they may have been covered in the materials previously submitted. Um, but I think in reading some of the letters from uh, neighbors, there was concern about the power output, or the uh, if there are any health effects from, from this type of setup.
Absolutely. So I guess the short answer is no. Um, there would not be, you know, any health impacts from the electromagnetic electromagnetic energy emitted from this project. Um, the FCC sets very strict guidelines, you know, AT&T's, you know, license, which, you know, costs billions of dollars to obtain, maintain, really hinges on them following those guidelines set forth by the FCC. Um, and we're well within those guidelines for electromagnetic energy emissions. So there would be no health impacts that anybody, you know, in the vicinity of this project.
Nothing with peacemakers or any other concerns?
Yep, no interference with those.
How about with uh, general electronics or communications devices? I mean, I understand it's there to support communication devices, but does it interfere with other?
Yep, same deal. You know, there is uh, no, you know, there can't be any interference as a condition of AT&T having this license on this uh, frequency. So there would be no interference with any other devices.
I know Marina had had some of those questions, but did you guys have any other questions for the applicant?
You know, I know that last, um, last month, we talked about other sites that were considered, or were there other sites considered? And why, I guess, why would you be such, consider such a small space when you could go a quarter mile up Glenwood Road and have much more space?
Yep, so there were, and Brenda may be able to speak more to this. There is a site selection analysis that was included in our initial submission that really outlines the different locations that were considered for this project. I guess why it can't be moved to a different spot is because, you know, when we're looking for where to place these projects, there's a specific search ring that AT&T will look at, and you know, any site that would be outside of that search ring would not achieve the goal of providing coverage to the West Binghamton cell here.
And in addition, for this particular site, it's also considered a capacity site, which means that it's got to be strategically placed to to offload data from coming from other towers within the networks. So that's why it gets pinpointed to a specific.
It's kind of redundant to ask, but why, if you know that the zoning does not accommodate what you're looking to do, would you try to push it through anyway?
So it, my understanding is it really comes down to the technology of the tower itself. Um, you know, I know one thing about Binghamton is the topography makes things kind of tricky because, you know, it's these frequencies are traveling over the air. So you know, if you have a, a building or, you know, a hill kind of blocking the transmission of that wave, it makes it so that we have to go up higher. Um, so you know, one hundred and ten feet, which is, you know, what we're seeking the variance for tonight, is really the lowest possible height, or the really the optimal height. This tower could be a
The height as much as I am the um, setback.
Right, but I I think they kind of, they tie it together. Uh, you know, the setback is there because of how high up that we are, and we have to be in the specific location, as Brenda said, you know, to relieve capacity issues faced by the AT&T network. If that, if that answers a question.
It does answer the question, but it puts us in a difficult position to say that, you know, you know, we'll cut this up there pretty much in half to make the exception for this. And that's pretty much what it is. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Just to be clear.
Any other questions?
No.
And just as an observation, I was noting to uh, um, Tito, that uh, scrolling through YouTube shorts, I saw a demonstration of a failure of, of a similar device. I don't think it was from AT&T or, I didn't, I did not look. I just saw what they did, and it was very interesting to watch. Um, because it fell in a very small footprint. I was, I was surprised, but it was the same technology you're describing. You know, I, I, I'm not an expert, and it uh, you know, I'm I just was very interested. And it's funny how our uh, our devices are listening to us and know what we've been talking about, which is kind of scary.
I, I was talking with Tito earlier, and it did go through planning board. Okay, and it was approved, so.
Okay. So and uh, as a reminder to everybody, we're doing an uncoordinated, uncoordinated review. Uh, planning board is doing their review. We're doing our review. So that's correct, right? Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Stick around. Um, we may have more questions for you as we go forward, but thanks for coming back and thanks for providing more information and insight. I will remind everybody that the public hearing is still open, so I would invite members of the public who want to speak in favor or against the uh, project, please come forward. I would also remind you that we did take note of what you had to say last month, so repeating yourself really is not gonna help, but if you have something new, other concerns, that is fine. Come on forward, state your name and address for the record. I will note, as we're doing that, there's a couple of uh, letters that were submitted. Uh, do you have the names of the folks that submitted them?
Yeah, we, one letter in our position from Ann Bednarski.
Yeah.
We're posted. We're from the planning commission and, and we're from Willard too. Also in opposition.
Right. And one was, I don't know if those people are here, but uh, we'll talk about those after everything is, welcome. Is the green button on?
There we go. Okay. Hi, um, Patricia Garaway, twenty-seven Crandall Street. Um, I just had a question about the lot located at Slosson and Crandall. Is that going to have the sixty-foot building at that location, or is that going to be like a parking lot?
That's the, that's the next case.
Oh, that's the next case. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm ahead of my
That's okay.
Okay, yeah, um, I'm actually in favor of it, especially with the commercial space. It's going to be offered in that building and the affordable housing. But I just want to know how it's going to impact me directly on my street if I'm going to have a sixty-foot building.
We'll, we'll talk about that one on the next case.
All right.
But thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Jim Spear from uh, several properties on Brown Street. Uh, I own, I own pretty much everything around, around that property. Plus, there's uh, four, four houses right across the street.
Could, before you get started, could you remind us where you live?
Uh, I live at uh, one ninety-seven Matthew Street, where Matthews intersects Brown Street. I'm right at the corner. So from this parcel, my, my home residence is less than a hundred yards from the, from the proposed tower.
Okay, thank you.
So um, I did a couple pictures of uh, of communication towers here. Uh, there's one up on Court Street, which uh, I'm assuming is similar to what you guys are putting up. Okay, so I have a picture of one at uh, where McDonald's is on Court Street, and I kind of just uh, did some sketches of what it's going to look like in the neighborhood. They did a uh, they did a beautiful bill, building next door to me, the Ansko camera building. Uh, my house is a hundred and twenty-five years old. I restored that. It took me six years, so trying to keep the neighborhood uh, cleaned up and stuff. Um, the Ansko building did a great job on it, but the Ansko building is only sixty feet high. And uh, the proposed tower is twice as high as it's supposed to be. The Brown Street property here, you know, the setback is half what it's supposed to be. If I want to put up a fence and there's a five-foot variance, I have to ask for two feet to get my fence closer to a property line, and these guys are asking for fifty-five feet, which is basically half of the, of the property. On this street, at this point, there's, there's no room. There is room for sidewalks, but there is no sidewalks on either side of the street. This would be a logical side, uh, logical side to put a sidewalk in. We have lots of traffic coming from Price Chopper, cutting over to West Side, and lots of people just walking the street. Um, the property is pretty much vacant on the left-hand side, and it's, you know, it's a good development spot for residences. And I just, I just think this tower is doesn't match in any way with what our neighborhood is, and to, to cut it down to, you know, half of the distance what they need to, and twice the height, they're asking for two different things. So I just want to show you what the towers are actually look like, and see what I'm looking at for my business, which is on Main Street, which is maybe three hundred or four hundred feet away, plus my house, which is less than a hundred feet away, or less than a hundred yards away. So I'd like to just pass these around, just so you guys get an idea of what is going up. It's going to affect my life forever.
Um, Tito, do you know, are there any plans for ever putting sidewalks in on the street with the city?
Knowledge, um, it's some
Yeah. But you're not aware of any plans currently.
I don't think as far as helping residential, it's an residential is not allowed in, in
Multi-uses, I mean, it's right next door, right?
What's that?
We, we have houses right on that street, right across the street from where it's going to be. I mean, you certainly would be able to put houses on that street since they're on the other side of the street.
Those that are there are, are legal, non-conforming, meaning they're grandfathered in. New residential development would not be allowed.
Thank you for putting that together for us. You have a second career in I, I'm sure you guys get the idea.
Yes.
Quick comment. How, or question, how high is the one over by McDonald's?
We were talking about that over here.
One hundred and twenty feet.
One twenty?
Yeah.
Because I remember we, I was on this, we approved this. I drive by there all the time. I thought it was going to be an eyesore. I never even noticed it. But it, once, I think, once they're there, I really, like, I have to really look for it to, it wasn't like, it surprised me because it wasn't an eyesore or something that just stuck out there.
Yeah.
So it's actually ten feet taller than this proposed.
Yeah, but if you get right down to it, this one's going to have a um, landing rod on the top of, which will make it effectively about the same.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you. So just in closing, you know, I mean, the zoning laws are here to protect us citizens, not big corporations. You know, like you said, they're not, they're not asking for a variance, a little variance. They're asking to make it to avoid it. I mean, just to, to devastate it, half of it. It's fifty percent of it. You know, it's not, like I said, when I want to move a fence, a five-yard setback, if I want to move it a foot over, I have to get a variance for just a fence, and this is a huge structure, and it's going to kill the neighborhood. And even if you don't see it driving down Court Street, I'm going to look out my window at my office. I'm going to drive around the corner to my businesses. It's going to be there every day of my life.
Mister Spear. Uh, one word, uh, the Court Street one that's behind McDonald's was turned down by city council. And it still went up, and I don't believe there's anything anybody can do about it. That's the problem. Well, it's all federally regulated, not mistaken.
Well, well, Pegback here has AT&T service. They have a hundred percent coverage right there. So I mean, I, I know they're trying to get out to other places, but I mean, it's, it's, it's crazy, and you know, I'd rather you guys put it down and let them fight us for it, but you know, it, it's crazy to put it on that street in that little shoehorn. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Did you want to come up and you're welcome to? Yeah. And it's totally up to you, but I don't want to force you to. Thanks for coming back.
Hi, I'm Peg Smith. I'm at forty Brown Street. Our business is at forty Brown. And I really don't have anything new to say, except that I have driven by Court Street. I took pictures at Court Street, and Court Street is back a lot farther than what you're talking about on our street, on Brown Street. And it's set back in, and it has trees in front of it back, a lot farther, I think, than you're looking at on Brown Street. And again, I'm just concerned about the people who are in the area who do live there and who work there. And if anything does happen, which you have assured us that it won't, um, what are our options? What do we do? If something does happen, what, what do we do? You know?
I'm, I'm not sure what you're considering, what could happen.
Well, I don't know. If you have a, you know, a sudden storm or something, and something does happen, and it does fall, or there is magnetic fields that come off it or whatever, what, and somebody does get hurt as a result of it, as a result of this, what, what do we do? Do we go to the city? Do we go to AT&T? Do we go, who do we go to for, you know, to take care of something?
Typically, if something bad happens, you go to everybody.
Go to them.
You, you, you seek restitution from whoever's available, whoever's had their fingers in it. Huh?
Well, I know, I'm, I know, I appreciate all that you've done, and I appreciate you bringing up the things that you brought up tonight.
Yeah.
And um, I just I, I'm, I'm done.
Well, thanks, Peg. Anybody else?
Yes, I have a question. Has anyone addressed of the public safety issue of this? Uh, being so close to, like, if this were to go up, it's so close to the street. And what is going to um, what's going to keep that from kids, vandals, um, climbing up on it?
I believe it's going to have a fence around the uh,
What kind of fence?
Sure, come on back. Thank you for not going far.
Could I suggest you close the public hearing if there's no one else?
Okay, yes, uh, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing portion of this uh, I'll second it. And seconded, and all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you very much. And this will lead us almost into our deliberation.
So yes, so, so to uh, answer that question first, yes, it will be a fenced compound. Um, you know, it'll be clear that there should be no trespassing on the area. I, I need to double-check the site plans, but typically, these types of towers have it, so there are no permanent climbing pegs, so it's in about ten or fifteen feet of the base of the tower. So, you know, a, a kid trying to pop the fence and scale up the pole, uh, really couldn't be something that would be able to happen.
But, but I'm concerned, but how high will the fence be? That's pretty much my question. How high is the fence?
Double-check that. I don't want to
I think it's in the same plan, but I don't remember. I think it's right near the end. It's small, I can't read it.
I can blow it up here. Trying to see how high.
Seven-foot-tall chain link fence with one-inch-tall barbed wire top.
With a one-inch-tall barbed wire top.
It looks like there's three strands of barbed wire going upon top.
So it may be one foot.
It must be a foot.
Yeah, it's got to be at least a foot.
So probably a foot, yeah. If that answers your question.
And so that leads me to another question then. So if you look at the so you have the tower itself. How far does the, the chain link fence have to be from the actual tower, the base of the tower? How many feet back is that?
The fence compound, I believe, is oh, if it's sixty by sixty, but the tower would be in the center, and the reason they have additional spaces, if additional carriers wanted to install, so they have to be
So you're getting closer and closer to Brown Street is what my example, this is my question is.
It's probably setback further in the fence compound than closer to the street. It's kind of central.
Okay, but it, but the tower itself has to be fenced in.
Correct.
Right, so you're still then expanding. So is the setback, the setback is from the base of the tower, not the fencing?
Correct. Base of the tower.
So you're really taking more than that setback because you're permanently affixing a fence to protect it. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Are you asking if fence counts towards the setback?
Well, obviously, it doesn't. That's what I want to be
Yeah, yeah, so
Obviously, it does not.
The requirement is, is for the, for the tower. Uh, the tower has to be
From the property.
From the property, from the nearest property lines. Yeah, correct.
So how far is it then, Tito, do you know, from the
The code says it has to be at least the height of the tower is how, is how far the setback has to be from the nearest property line. They're proposing, I believe it was fifty-nine feet from, from the nearest property line, whereas the tower is a hundred and ten feet. So the variance is, is the difference between a hundred and ten and fifty-nine.
No, I do. But fences can go right to property lines, right?
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
But the purpose, this fence doesn't look like it's right to the property line. It looks like it's got a setback.
Yeah.
Oh, between five and ten feet. I'm not sure which.
Hey, I'm just comparing this to, there are nice egg substations all over the city. I don't find a cell tower dangerous like a substation. But that's just how I'm looking at.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, well, let's move on to our deliberation. All right, well, let's move on to our deliberations and discussion of this uh. Application. And. Bear with me because my printer was acting up, so uh, what I did print out here may not be all of it. I'm pretty sure it's not. So we have to look at uh. Whether this is an undesirable change to the neighborhood, if there's a reasonable alternative, is request substantial? And is it an adverse impact to the physical environmental conditions? And whether or not it was self-created. And we also have to keep in mind, um. We. If. We can go, we can either approve this or not approve this or see it again. Um, the impacts of us approving it are pretty clear, the impacts of us not approving it. Um, have impacts on the applicant where they could go in another avenue. And go right straight through to approval without our input, as I understand it. Um. So I'd like to look at this. To try to get this as uh. Commendable to the neighborhood as we can. I don't know if that's gonna be possible, but that's the way I'd like to look at this. So. We'll let the discussion start. Uh, I would uh, make a motion that is an unlisted action and for uh. For this part of it. Uh, that we are a lead agency for seeker, can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so I have to go through some basic criteria, anybody who's been here before has heard these things read many times, so I will. Go through this, it, this addresses some of the major or potentially major impacts, we're looking for. Items that may have a small to no impact or something that's gonna have moderate to large impact regarding uh, environmental quality. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? And typically, for those of you don't come here often, these get prefilled out by planning staff and they let us know. Pretty much as a guide, which ones uh, we need to look more closely at, because they don't get a check mark in the, in the place that is our happy place. So this one has no check mark and either no impact or high to moderate impact. So we need to discuss, is this uh, will, will granting this variance create a con, material conflict with an adopted land use plan or, or zoning regulations? Well, obviously, it has conflict with zoning regulations. We're also in a uh. We're in industrial. Yeah, I too. So it's not. The type of activity is not so much out of place, it's the size. The, the layout, the, the way it's put together. So. Regarding environmental quality, with the granting of this. Difference. Is small, a small impact or a moderate to large impact is what we need to determine. I would argue that environmentally it provides, it, it's a, it's a small impact to the area. Visually, it's gonna be more than a small impact, I grant you that.
Depending on where you are, I would agree. Hmm, depending on where you're located, I would agree.
Yeah, obviously, for the neighbors, it's gonna be more of an impact.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna be looking right up at it.
Yeah.
But I agree, I think it's a small impact.
Yeah, except for, like you said, the neighbors, I mean, it's. Would I wanna look at it every day? I don't think so. But.
Okay, well, we're starting off slowly, but we're gonna move on through these, bear with me. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? Not really, it's gonna be about the same intensity of la, land use. Once it's in, and once the construction is over, it will be very little activity. So I'd say no to small impact. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Again, this one was left blank for us to discuss, is it a small impact, or is it a moderate to large impact?
I think it's moderate, at least.
I go back to my first one, I, I think it's a, I think it is an impact, but I think it would be a small impact.
I say why you think it's moderate?
Yeah.
I think it's inviting trouble to the neighborhood, it's also.
How?
I, I think there's a lot of um, activity in the neighborhoods that. This would invite. Um. I think these were danger, I just don't think. I, I don't think it would be. I, I think that a ten foot or a seven foot chain link fence in um.
Barbed wire.
Barbed wire would be changed to some of the people that they like that neighborhood.
I would imagine, I would imagine it's gonna be lit.
Uh, so no, not the compound itself, there typically is a time to light, so that when maintenance facilities go on to the property, you know, they're able to, you know, especially at nighttime, they're able to see what's going on, yes, but there's not gonna be a permanent light there.
And that probably could be adjusted, should you find that there is a. Bad activity in the area?
Certainly, you know, they, they have a vested interest in keeping trouble off of this site for sure, so that could be changed if needed.
I don't, I, I, I don't see it quite the same way you do though, um, I'm just, just my opinion. Um. It's, it's not great, it's not gonna be great for whoever gets it. Um, wherever it may be, um, and I, I. The, the neighbors, I feel for you. Um. But again. In the end. It's, it's going to go up here. Whether we say yes or not. So it, I, right at this point, I'd like to get through this part, so that we can get to the discussion of any requirements we wanna put on the applicant. Your opinion is welcome here and part of, part of the discussion. How do you guys feel about that? That specific topic?
I don't know if it'll go up either way, Tito seems to think it wouldn't.
I think you, you have some discretion with the variance, um, the, the planning commission had less discretion, uh. Because they're proposing a tower in an industrial area, which is the preferred zoning. Uh, according to the code, I think with the variance, you do have. Some discretion, um. They could, they could challenge it and, and go from there, um, but I just wanted to make that point.
Appreciate that. But I, I also, this is our opportunity to make it as good as it can be.
I agree.
Is the point I'm trying to make. I mean, I, I don't think we can change much of their method, like, we can't say, put up a ten foot fence, because that would be against other parts of Arizona. Things like that. So I, can we, can we all get behind the uh. Proposed action, uh, impairing the character quality of the existing community, being on the moderate side? Uh, not on the moderate, I mean, the small. The low moderate.
I'm good with that, I'm fine.
You, you get into a whole different set of um.
Criteria.
Things that we have to look into, not that we can't. But if we do determine things to be moderate or large, we have to get into a much deeper dive. I think than we, is needed for this project.
Be.
Is that? Someone said.
Yeah, we were just saying that if, if, if a board member disagrees with a particular item, then you can. If you want, you can vote on each, um, that way she can still object. And, but you can move forward. Or you, you know, or you can discuss and vote on. The negative declaration as a whole, it's up to you.
That's where I was trying to go. So it, it sounds like we've got three in favor going with small and you're still. On the moderate side.
Right.
Okay. All right, moving on down the line, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? Uh, no, I don't believe there is any critical environmental area in the area. Okay, that's good to know. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway? Should not have any effect, effect there. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Should not impact that at all. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public, private wastewater treatment utilities? I don't think it will have any tie in there at all. Uh, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? I do not believe so. Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources? Uh, for example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? No, it should not impact those items. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? Should not affect those, I'm sure there's a, there's a uh. Plan for the slope and. For this, for the site. Small site. Will the proposed action create hazard to environmental resources or human health? This is another one that was for us to discuss. And it probably goes more towards what you were discussing, uh, whether or not you're. Are you able to? Or do you see it as a small? No hazard or a moderate tie?
So we did.
How? Will the action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? By granting of this project, the variance to bu, to build this project? So you're, you're, you're good with a small to, okay, how about the rest of?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
All right, that gets us through with, there were a couple of. Um, three to, three to one type of views on a couple of the items, but ma, majority view was um. A negative declaration, so I would make a motion that we have a negative declaration for seeker, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you're able to support that or, okay, so that's unanimous. All right. So that gets us back to the criteria. I don't like going forward and backwards, I, I apologize. Okay. First criteria is that an undesirable change uh, to the neighborhood, character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created uh, by granting the area variance.
I think it's an undesirable change for the neighbors.
For the needed neighbors, yeah.
But as far as. The project itself, I don't think it is.
Can, can, is it, it's hard to quantify undesirable change.
I agree.
The definition?
The, the, the uh, criteria is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. By granting the area variance.
So I would look at that criteria as well.
The last part?
Yeah. And the character.
Well, I think you could argument that it may not create a direct detriment. But the character. I mean. Granted, a good portion of it is. Industrial, but industrial does not necessarily mean ugly and bad. It doesn't have to. It just means that there's industrial or commercial activity. But then again, I'm not a hundred percent convinced that this is gonna be necessarily ugly. It can be done. In a less undesirable fashion by some of the landscaping that's included. I can see that. Thank you. Did.
We might wanna each say your opinion.
Yeah. Will it? Will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or will there be a detriment to nearby properties by granting the variance?
I'm, I'm sorry, could you speak into the mic just so that Salin can get?
Um, I would say, I think it does.
Which, which part specifically?
Well, well, it's a detriment, well, it would affect. It would, I would think even though some of the residential property that's on Brown Street is um. If it were to ever try to turn it over, but make it, it would, it would be definitely a detriment to sell any of that property. Any of the existing property. And it could affect. Um. Yeah, so that's why I think it. So it's, it's a two-part question.
It is.
And my answer.
Character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. So you're saying detriment to the future resale?
And char, I mean, character to the property, I mean, you're looking at. Commercial property now, so. But yet, in the same respect, it's not. It's so high that it is going to affect the surrounding neighborhood. So I would say, I think it would affect both categories, yes.
How do you guys feel?
Personally, I think up close, you're gonna see the base of the tower and the trees and the fence. If you're within a close range, typically, you'd have to look. Up directly, you're gonna see it from the neighborhood, absolutely.
Just like you mentioned, yes.
I see cell tower, towers all over, it just seems to be part of the. World today and. Like I say, I, the one I see on Court Street, it just, I understand there's not a house right there.
Mm-hmm.
But they just kind of blend in with today's. Neighborhood.
I have to agree with Ernie there, I mean, it's. Like you said, I don't know if I'd want it next to my house, that's the only thing.
So that's where.
Totally get that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, what's there now? It's a empty gravel lot. If I'm not mistaken. Yeah. And to me, that's a detriment. It's. Blight, that's there now.
Yeah. I'm not saying this is a hundred percent the best fit for that property. But. I'm also saying it's not, it's not the worst. Potential use of the space either. So. Can we vote on these item by item? Okay. Um. Just kind of a straw poll to see where we all stand as we're going forward. Who could support this being acceptable uh, as being not an undesirable change? Okay.
Yeah.
No, and you can, that's fine. Let's move on to the next item. Whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method, by some other method. Uh, feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. So that, was there an ultimate? Is there an alternate? We did ask the applicant if they considered locations. Site selection is a difficult thing and uh. I'm, I'm, you know, I don't know exactly what happened, but you probably had a short list of properties that you could consider. And in the criteria you were looking at, this was probably your best bet. I don't know that to me is a fact. But I do know that you probably did consider other sites. Was it the best that we would have picked?
Probably.
I don't know. Somebody else would have been unhappy with another location. So. I am somewhat. Satisfied that they did give. Uh, some due diligence to other locations and came to find out that those didn't meet their criteria. And I would hope that their primary criteria was to have the. And I would hope that their primary criteria was to have the service levels that they're looking for. And to have the service saturation that they need. How do you guys feel about that?
I think I agree. I'm also thinking of. The cri- we did ask about the height. And the height seems necessary to do the job that the tower's there to do. So, um. It just makes sense. It seems to be without direct questioning. But the other one on Court Street is right along the railroad tracks. They seem to be going right down the valley. Along the railroad tracks. To try and bump the signal.
And then there's one on the, the Brandywine behind Cook Brothers there.
That one went up without me noticing it going up. They go up relatively quick. I'm sorry. No, Peg, what do you have? Yeah, we, we know that.
Right, there, I mean, there is a business.
They're not, they're not the same, but.
They're not the same, but I mean, it's a similar tower is what I'm saying. The tower, they said the tower is similar. I understand the size of the lot is smaller.
And I'd really rather not, but go ahead. If they're right next door, they should have been noticed. I don't know if they were. They should have been. Carry on. Sue.
You know, my. I just feel that it. The height of the tower, like you're talking about the tower is unnoticed. You get, you get used to the tower. At Court Street or. Wherever of, of the Brandyline. But this is just being, I just feel this is shoe warning and. On a piece of property that doesn't come close to meeting the zoning at all. I mean, fifty-five feet. I, I mean, it's, you're just. Sticking this big tower right in the middle. I mean, what's to say next time it's not gonna be on Main Street? And then what? Then we say, well, we did it on Brown Street. We did it by McDonald's. We did it by Cook Brothers. Right? So I'm, I'm hard on this, that it's too. The piece of property is too small. For what the project is.
The, the question really on this item is whether or not they looked at alternatives. Then. And I think that's.
I mean, I, I would, you know, maybe we need to study the in-depths. What they looked at. If this was the best alternative. Then. Then how bad were the other ones?
John, how do you feel about the uh?
Maybe they did, so they did.
Yeah.
But I still don't think it's, it's. I would go back to the drawing board on finding a better place.
That's, that is one possible. How do you feel about the uh?
I have to agree with Sue on that one. It's a. I don't know, I just don't, I think the location is odd. Where they want to put it in the center of the. Of that part of the city. Just seems odd to me.
Okay, let's move on to the number three of the list of, of uh, criteria. Is a substantial uh, area variance? I'll start with you this time.
Yes. It is.
Why do you say yes?
Because I think it's just too far to set.
Because it's double the height?
Um.
Or duh, or half.
To be honest with you, I'm not concerned with the height as much as. I am with the just. Being right. Right on top of everything. It's too. Too close, way too close.
Hey? How do you guys feel about substan- substantial? Request for variance?
I think, I think it has, it's substantial, but it also has a breaking point. It's designed to fall within its. Own area. So I don't really have an issue with it.
Yeah, myself, I, I see it. It's. It's as close to sub. Super substantial as you can get, but it has an explanation and a, a reasoning for how they get there.
Right.
So I see two kind of against and two for. This kind of split down the middle on this.
I just have a, I just think it's an odd place for it. I'm sorry. It, it seems to me like they could have found another location.
That's okay, we, we, we're getting there.
Yeah.
Um, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect. Or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the. Neighborhood or district. And with the engineered break point, it's. Likely safe. I wouldn't want to be there when it breaks, if it ever breaks. But I would be relatively confident of the engineering that went into the design that will assure it to go that way. As far as other adverse effects, I'm not sure what, what they may be, so I may be somewhat naive to it. How do you guys feel about the uh? Potential adverse effects?
I don't really think. You know, the adverse effects be- besides. Is it gonna devalue the property around it? I don't. That, that's the only adverse effect that I could possibly see and depending on how close the houses are, I don't really think it's gonna affect. The property value.
Sue, how about the uh, adverse effects?
Well, I mean, I, I just think. I don't know. I mean, adverse effects to. The neighborhood, you mean, or to it?
Yep.
Yeah, I think it is gonna have an adverse effect to the neighborhood.
Again, does it get back to your, uh, I guess you'd call it an attractive nuisance is kind of the way you put it. That it would, it could invite activity that you might not want to see.
Yeah, there's already activity in that neighborhood. I just think it's an open invitation.
Ernie, how do you feel about this particular?
Hmm, under adverse activity or adverse effects. I'm thinking more of like high voltage lines or the radiation possibly coming from the tower, which I. Assume they say AT&T is regulated, highly regulated. There are towers are all over. So.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm not, I'm not worried about that, really.
So looking like about three that can accept this and you're still a pretty much a hard no. So I'm just summarizing.
Well, I mean.
We haven't gotten any kind of decision yet.
Yeah. Okay.
It was just this one.
Still hard, no.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
And whether or not it's self-created. It, it may be self-created. But it is in the public, theoretically in the public good to get uh, complete cell coverage. So. Typically, we look at whether it's self-created and that is not necessarily a, something to rule it out. But it's just something kind of to recognize that uh. That is going to be done. So I got a question for um, staff here. In the discussion, the planning uh, commission. They, you said they approved this project? Did they have any limitations or? Stipulations?
No, it was just approved, subject to the granting of the variance by you all, and um, there were some landscaping requirements that they added um. Which the, the applicant agreed to.
Okay. Any further discussion? This one's not as straightforward as we normally have.
Right.
So whether we approve it or not, it still can go through, correct?
Um, they would have to go by different avenues.
Right, but the different avenues, like I said, Court Street was not approved. By the city of Binghamton, by city council. I was on it.
I believe.
And it just went through, it went through and the next thing you know, the antenna was up.
Well, I mean. I'm.
Yeah, Peter, can you?
I'm pretty sure that we've had, since I've been on this board. We've had at least three. Of these. Applications. And I believe they've all been approved.
He's checking.
That's just my memory. Don't trust that. But then again, they were all somewhat different than this. Every lot was larger. Chances are with something of this type, they're gonna be looking for some form of variance anyway. They are just so big. And to do anything that they need to be done, there's gonna be some variance. Have you ever had a project like this where there were not variances required?
Sometimes they pop up. Um, I, I think the issue is, you know, working in cities where there isn't such an availability of, you know, huge. One hundred acre parcels, uh, you know, variances like this are more common.
Better area?
Yep, so they're more of a necessity in places like this.
We're trying to uh, double check my memory because. We should.
From what I can tell, um. In two thousand and sixteen. The variance was approved. And. Uh, so was the site plan. That, that's what I have. It's possible that. Something happened with city council. Yeah, I'm just seeing in the, in the decision letters, um. The site plan was approved and then the variance was approved. It could be so, there's something I'm not seeing here, but that's what I see.
Okay, um. So where do we go from here? I mean, we could float a uh, proposal, a motion and see where the vote comes out on it. Have we had enough discussion? Do you feel to uh? To be at that point? Okay.
Think so. But any objection should be on, on the record.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm real relying on it, so. If someone wants to make a motion, go for it and.
I, I have a question for the applicant. I- is there a reason you can't move further back from Brown Street? Is that, was that? What the railroad allowed? Did they want a certain distance from the tracks or something? You can't get further away, obviously, from the side property lines, but.
I think, I think the, the minimum for the, there is a minimum setback from the, the railroad tracks themselves. Um, so I believe that's where, how we landed where we did.
It look, it looks to be leaning. I shouldn't say that. It looks to be favoring the back part of the property as it is.
Yep, it is.
So. All right, I will, uh, I'm gonna propose a motion that we can consider. Um, for the applicant Centerline Communications LLC on thirty Brown Street. I would like to propose a motion to vote on uh, for, to approve the area variance for a construction of a one hundred and ten. Foot tall tele- telecommunications tower, where sixty-five is the maximum height. With a fifty-nine foot setback from the nearest property line. Where the minimum of one-ten is required in the I-two light and medium industrial district. Could I get a second?
Second.
Okay, and I'd like to take our time on this one. Um, all those in favor? I'll say aye.
Aye.
And I will call for nays.
I'm looking at this site plan here and.
Are you, you're not ready to vote yet?
Yeah, I'm just. It's sixty-nine feet to the railroad tracks and we got fifty-nine to the street frontage and then there's a fence line there. I'll vote aye. We're fine.
Sure, we, I mean, we're gonna discuss this. No, this is for the, this is to approve the motion or to deny it. I got that. But I want to make sure that you're voting what you want and.
Yeah.
There are three potential votes you can make. You can vote aye, nay, or abstain.
No, I'm not gonna, it's just. No vote aye for it.
So it's three ayes and one, one nay. And I'd like. I'd like to uh, try to capture the items that you're objecting to. Um. And I'm, I, I wanna try to summarize them unless you would like to. Okay. I, I, yeah, I got you. Um. But I, I think we have. Come to a conclusion? Okay. Um, so that, that uh, we, the result is that we have approved the area variance for the height and the setback and. Go forward in your planning. Thank you very much. Very much are. Okay, second case of the evening is. The Metro Group Properties Inc. One eighty-seven Clinton Street, area variances for the construction of a sixty-foot tall building where forty-five is the maximum. And zero feet of commercial space along a portion of the ground floor where thirty feet are required along all street frontages. Is the applicant present? If you would, please come forward, state your names for the ad, uh, for the record and your addresses.
Hmm, that's gonna be a bit.
Thanks.
The worst.
I know, but I appreciate that.
Yeah, stand up for how you feel.
You almost did. I mean, and you did because I'm still. It's, it was gonna happen no matter what. And that's why. I'd say ninety-five percent. This is like I said, when I was on city council, we denied the one on Court Street and it still went up. And that really irritated me.
Sorry to delay you so long.
I know.
Okay, good evening. My name is Bob McCurdick. I'm with the law firm Coffin and Gerhardt at ninety-nine Corporate Drive in Binghamton. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the Metro Group Properties. Uh, and we're here seeking two area variances. With respect to a mixed-use development project at one eighty-seven Clinton Street. Um, and neighboring parcels. So with me tonight, we have Steve Sanishen. He is uh, the. Uh, project engineer. He's with Delta Engineering. And we have Dustin Welch. He's with, uh, he's a, a project architect and he's with Pasaro Architects and Engineers. Okay, we're happy to be before you here to. To discuss this project. Um. What I'll do is, I'll, I'll give you a brief overview of the project. Um, and I'll walk through the five-part area variance test, which you're clearly very familiar with. I'll give you our input on those five factors. Um, and then I'll turn it over to the design team to walk through some of the um, the project renderings and the plans. So you have a full understanding of this project. Uh, so this project will include two five-story structures. Located along Clinton, Jarvis and Hudson Streets. Uh, the two structures are connected by a courtyard, um, which will be an outdoor courtyard along Clinton Street. And there's gonna be kind of a grand entrance way, which you'll see on the renderings that Dustin will show you in a moment. Uh, the, there's gonna be a total of two hundred eighty-eight units. It'll be a mix of one, two and three-bedroom apartments. And the entire ground floor along Clinton Street will be reserved for commercial. Use, uses such as retail establishments or um, food service, that kind of uh, commercial activity. Uh, but the hallmark of the project is really that it was designed to enhance the living enjoyment of the people who are gonna be living there. So there's going to be an outdoor playground behind the building for children to play at. There'll be an indoor fitness center for anyone.
There'll be an indoor fitness center for anyone living in the building to uh to use. There's a uh community room that people can use for parties and functions. There'll be a common laundry area. There'll be storage areas on site, including bicycle storage. We've got E V charging stations and the courtyard that I mentioned with benches and shade trees and and shrubs. Uh, there's gonna be a sizable amount of green space, which um Steve will show you as he goes through the site plans. And there's um uh approximately three hundred parking spaces that'll be behind the structures uh for the residents and their guests to park at. So um what we're requesting today from the zoning board are two area variances with respect to the project. So the first one pertains to the height of the buildings. Under your zoning code, there's a maximum building height of forty five feet in this zoning district. What we're asking for is a variance of fifteen feet up to sixty in total. Okay, so it's going from forty five feet to sixty feet. The second variance that we're requesting is you've got a provision in the zoning code that requires residential uses not be located within the first thirty feet of the ground floor of a building. And so what we're asking for is we're going to provide commercial uses all along Clinton Street. So we're gonna comply with the zoning code in that respect. We're asking for the side streets Hudson and Jarvis Street to allow residential units on the first floor of those streets rather than commercial units. Um, so as you know, there's a five part uh variance test for this and I'm going to just walk through each of those factors for you and and give you our point of view on each of them. So the first one is whether the variance will result in an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. So this project is a direct result of the Clinton Street Neighborhood Business District Plan that was approved by the City of Binghamton last year. And what that plan seeks to do is revitalize the Clinton Street corridor with transformational projects aimed at economic development, additional housing shovel ready projects. So that's exactly what we're pro- proposing here um tonight. So exactly the opposite of an undesirable change in the neighborhood. This is exactly what the neighborhood needs, is exactly what the city has requested to be developed along the Clinton Street corridor. Um, merely adding fifteen feet to the height of the structures um won't be detrimental to the neighborhood. Uh, so the many of the properties in the immediate vicinity are multi-story structures, mixed use structures. Um, three and four stories tall. This won't be out of place um in the context of of the neighborhood and the district. And in addition, the way we've designed these structures, as as you'll see with when Dustin shows you the renderings, there there's ornamental um uh cornices at the top of the buildings. There's a recessed um edifice at the top. We've designed this to be aesthetically pleasing uh to the neighborhood, so it doesn't provide a detrimental impact. Typically, these height restrictions are intended to um mitigate for any kind of loss of views or light from properties behind the structure. In this case, the only thing behind these structures are railroad tracks. So it's not going to provide a detriment in that respect. And on the other sides of the building, they're they're surrounded by streets, the Hudson, Clinton and uh Jarvis Streets. So that won't have that. We're we're not talking about a structure that's surrounded by other um buildings where the height the height variance would have a potentially negative um impact on the character of the neighborhood. With respect to the um allowance of the use of the ground floor units along Hudson and Jarvis Streets as residential, that also won't result in a negative uh undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Both Hudson and Jarvis Streets have residential units on the first floor. So it'll be, it'll fit right in with those neighborhoods. And like I said, we're preserving the commercial use on the ground floor on Clinton Street, which is exactly what the city wants. That's the main economic driving uh area for uh for the Clinton Street corridor. So the second factor for the area variance is um whether the benefit sought can be achieved by some other feasible method. And this is effectively an alternatives analysis. Um, wh- this project is intended to be an anchor project. Uh, it's intended to revitalize commercial activity uh in in along Clinton Street. The only way that can happen is if you have a project that draws enough people to the area. And because of the size of the lot, the the only way to achieve that density is by building up. So we can't get enough people, uh, we can't get enough residential units on this lot because of the size of it in any way other than building up. And that's why we're asking for that additional floor to be allowed to go to that sixty foot requirement. Same goes for the uh side streets of Hudson and Jarvis to allow residential in order to achieve that density and to have an anchor project to draw other economic activity into the area. We need to allow those side streets to be um residential rather than commercial, which quite frankly is is a better use of of those streets anyways, based on the nature of the the property. So the third element in the um area variance test is is whether the area variance is substantial. So typically, when you're looking at the substantiality factor, you're looking at, I I tend to look at the fifty percent requirement. Is it more than a fifty percent change in the um the requirements, right? The the last project you had was a, I think it was a double, almost a double the the height variance. Here, we're looking for a very minor fifteen foot variance from forty five feet to sixty feet. It's a small percentage. It's not a substantial um difference from what your code allows. Same with respect to the ground floor use of the side streets Jarvis and Hudson. Um, neither of those re- represents significant commercial activities uh on those streets. They're much more suited for residential activities and that's why we're asking for that variance. It's not substantial because we're preserving the ground floor commercial use along Clinton Street. The fourth factor in the area variance standard is uh examines the impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or the district. So the important part here is that we're not talking about an undeveloped pristine site. We're talking about a site that uh was previously developed. It has contamination on the site. It's uh an eyesore. I I think by anyone's standard, it's a dilapidated site. We're looking to remediate the environmental conditions on the site and build what what I think is universally seen as a a very attractive um structure. So this won't be a a negative impact for the physical environmental uh conditions of the neighborhood or the district. I think it'll be just the opposite. We're gonna be cleaning up a dilapidated site and presenting you with a with a aesthetically pleasing um structure to trigger additional develop development along Clinton Street. And the fifth factor is whether um this is a self-created hardship. Um, so the important point here is that the developer, um the the prior owners of the property are the ones who contributed to the um the conditions on the site. Uh, so the developer in this case um was not the prior owner of the property, did not provide produce contamination on the property. Um, he's coming in as kind of the white knight to to save this property um and to again remediate it and redevelop the the site. So wh- when you're proposing a project of this nature that requires that level of remediation, um, it adds to the expense of the project. And so that then triggers the need to maximize the um the residential units by building up and allowing residences on the side streets so that it can be an economically viable project. Uh, and that's that's why we're asking for these these two variances here tonight. So um, we feel confident that we can meet this five part uh variance test. We're very optimistic. This is a a unique project. Um, the the city has been asking for years for a developer to come in and spark development along Clinton Street and revitalize that corridor. We finally have a developer now who has listened to the city and it was presented exactly what the city is asking for. Um, so we're 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 very optimistic about this. We think this is the beginning of something very big and positive for Clinton Street. So um uh, so I'll leave it at that and I will turn it over to the um the engineers and the architects to walk through the plans while we start with the architect, please.
Take this on a a journey. We'll see if that works. Hi, everybody. Um, so I'm gonna reiterate some of the points that have already been made, but there were some intentional efforts in the design to mitigate the verticality of the building. So we've included a setback, uh setback at the upper floor. There's a cornice as you transition from the fourth floor to the fifth floor. Um, as well as a material change from the fourth floor to the fifth floor that should mitigate the kind of visual impact of the height of the building. Um, in addition to the fact this building is kind of set back as already. Um, one of the things that we did was we wanted to uh create this kind of main entry plaza. So the building is chamfered and uh creates uh is recessed to create this kind of uh entrance plaza at Clinton and Hudson. Um, and again, I think to some of the points that we previously made, you know, we're maintaining retail and commercial use along Clinton Street. Uh, and only including the uh residential down along Jarvis and Hudson. Also, yeah. All right, that's probably hard to see this from where you are, but oh. Oh, sure, sorry. Don't wanna break it. Um, so looking at the site plan, this is kind of the bird's eye view of the project here, just to get the lay of the land and where everything's kind of going. Um, we are building this project in two phases. So the first phase is gonna be this building at the corner of Clinton and Hudson. And then the second face building will be at the corner of Clinton and Jarvis. And the parking lot will be constructed as part of the first phase. So all this parking will be in to accommodate this before both buildings are even complete. Um, we do have enough parking here for all the units, so we don't have to utilize any on-street parking. Everything is off-street on our site. Um, there's gonna be two main entrances to it. One will be of Crandall, um, coming through our parking lot on Slauson. And the other will be off Jarvis over here, just past the underpass. Um, the plaza that was mentioned before is right here between the two buildings that connects them, provides a nice space. And there will also be some additional retail parking here right off of Clinton Street. So we've got plenty of parking and entrances to get in and out and and accommodate all the vehicles coming to and from. Um, I did want I guess, oh, it did go. Um, on Slauson, there is no buildings on the Slauson portion of the property. It's just parking lot there with of course landscaping and screening around the outside, which I can show you really quick here. Um, on this landscape plan, anything that's green is some kind of planting. Okay, so we've got our landscape buffers around all the parking areas and and any place that we had uh are adjacent to another property and along this roadway here. So that just kind of gives you the lay of the land of the green that we are proposing here. So that's that's it. That's kind of the lay of the land and uh what we're proposing.
Uh, thank you very much. Members of the board, do you have any questions for the applicants?
Get two questions. One of them is just kind of, cause I wanna figure that out. When you say on the fifth floor, you have a setback. Does so did that affect the, do the same number of units on the fifth floor that you would on the fourth floor? They're just set back?
Yes.
Okay, and they're the same size then or are they smaller?
They're they're a little bit smaller just to accommodate that step back, but um yeah, they're still they're still good units.
And then the other, the only other question I had is, um, you have uh residential units on the first floor in Hudson and Jarvis. How many units are they?
That's that's a good question that I can get you an answer to.
Okay.
I don't know where I'm at.
Okay.
You're asking specifically about how many residential units are on the first floor of Clinton, of uh Jarvis and Hudson. Okay. We can get you that answer. Now, you mentioned there was some uh remediation to be done. Who was the previous owner of this property or these properties? Um, well, I I don't have that information with me right now, but I I do know the the some of the contamination dates back to the eighteen hundreds.
I believe that.
Yeah, we we and we're, I wanna be clear, we're not casting aspersions on the current owner of the property. Um, i- i- or anyone in particular. It's just the fact that there are there the D E C has found a need to for remediation on the property dating back years. And I I believe in our secret document, I think we identified one from the eighteen eighties. Wow. That's very responsible. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, you have that. Yeah. Oh, I know. I mean, I I like the personality of the building. I think it's phenomenal. Uh, you're taking approximately five acres. It's four point two, three, three acres on for the building itself and some parking. And I noticed here there's another point five eight acres. And then you showed that little spot in the back that's a point eight, three acres that you're going to, what did you say that was gonna be used for that one right hand corner? Y- yes, down there.
That's gonna be for parking area only.
That's also parking.
That's all parking back here, yes.
I I just like the whole setup of it. I just think it's phenomenal. I think it's really gonna help that area. Uh, Mr. Martinez and I talked about this earlier. And like you said, there there might be smaller stores around there too that wanted to revitalize the front of the buildings. And you're gonna have two hundred and eighty apartments there. You're gonna have people walking around helping revitalize Clinton Street. I I just think the project is phenomenal. I really do. Uh, it's it's exciting. Oh, it's very exciting.
I'm I'm assuming that you're gonna have uh stormwater plan for the whole place and all that's. Yeah, so we're we're appearing in front of the uh Planning Commission as well. Uh, and there's a uh Steve is prepared a a in his team is prepared a stormwater management plan uh to deal with all the stormwater on the site. And the Planning Commission will be conducting a seeker review in which all of those items will be addressed. Yep, that's a good segue for me to mention this, uh, that your proposal has gone before the Planning Commission and it's been approved as of this week. Uh, well, it has not been approved yet. Or or parts of it have, they voted to be the lead agency. I'm sorry.
Correct.
And that's what we're just talking about is leading agency for seeker. So we're not gonna get involved. That we're going to have we, after we get done with this part, we're going to uh address that for our part of that. But very exciting. I I I think we've got an answer to your question on the number of units.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, so we have, we're showing currently four units along Jarvis and then eight units along Hudson.
It wouldn't affect the way I wrote on it. I just was kind of more curious about how that would look and how that would work.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you said two phases. So what would be the projected end time of the phase one? And then what would be the projected end time for phase two?
Right, so it's it's a multi-year project. Um, and I I think what we've proposed is that phase one would be in around the twenty twenty six time period and phase two would be twenty twenty nine. I can't remember if I'm remembering that correct. Is that right? Yeah. I mean, that it's always subject to change as we go forward, but that's what we're intending right now.
Very, I just have praise. It's a very good building. Yep, the city's lucky.
I was I was having a little difficulty uh connecting that visual on the corner to the overhead view, but once you described it, I see where you're looking from. It's coming from the upper right. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, yeah, makes much more sense now after you've explained it. Okay. Um, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Um, we look forward to uh maybe some more questions, but uh at this point, you guys are released from the hot seat. Thank you. Thanks.
Uh, we believe we should, yes. I just wanna explain something really quickly. We we did legal noticing for a public hearing today, and so you do have to open the public hearing. But um as far as the process goes, this is a type one action under seeker, which means seeker review has to be coordinated. So there has to be only one lead agency. Planning Commission has declared themselves lead agency. So uh when we get to the seeker portion, Z B A could either vote to accept the Planning Commission as lead agency or you could contest that. when we get to the seeker portion, ZBA could either vote to accept the Planning Commission as lead agency, or you could contest that.
Should we do that during or after the public hearing?
Either one, because the public hearing should be left open, and this should be tabled. Once you're done, you know, asking questions, et cetera, this should be tabled until June.
Okay. Thank you very much. Would you like to stay up here for the public hearing portion as well?
If you'd like to.
You're welcome to. If if there are any questions from the from the public that we could respond to, we'd be happy to do so if you feel that that's important.
Yeah, I think I only see one currently, so if you want, if you don't mind sticking around, it might be helpful. Appreciate. Well, but she's going to have to come up here.
Oh, right.
That's the only thing, sorry.
So I would, at this point, I would like to move to open the public hearing for twenty-seven Clinton Street. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, then anyone present wishing to speak for or against the project, come on down.
Hello, Ben.
Hi.
Okay, so I have my answer now to the building. There's nothing going to be there. It's going to be a parking lot.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to state your name and address.
Patricia Garraway, twenty-seven Crandall Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So now that I have my answer, and it will be a parking lot, I just jotted down some general things that I wanted to see for further clarification. So with the building being put up, will it increase foot traffic to cross over the train tracks to Thorpe? Because as I see it now, there's already a few stragglers that go along that route. Will it produce more people? And my question was, will the underpass be now renewed to avoid accidents that may result from people illegally crossing the train tracks?
We could answer that.
Okay.
If you want to just like pass the mic over to him. Or, yeah. Thanks.
So Steve, do you want to talk about the fence that'll be back there?
Yeah, we actually are proposing a chain-link fence along the whole back edge of the property. Minimum six foot tall to keep people from going over and into the into the tracks as well as plantings. So there's going to be a bit of a barrier there. It's not going to be like you can just walk through there like you can right now. So that should hopefully dispel, and that'll go around the whole backside of our property and even along the residence here and then Slauson here. So there's basically, we're going to be hemmed in with fence and plantings all the way around.
So they're going to be directed to natural official-type crossings?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll I'll just add to that also. Typically, so it's you're not allowed to cross train tracks, okay, in that manner. Typically, when you've got an undeveloped dilapidated type of a parcel, it leads to activities that aren't permitted. When you've got a well-developed parcel where there's people around, it looks like it's cared for, we're going to have a manager who's going to be on-site, who's going to be managing the property. That will tend to lead to less criminal activity or or less activity that's not allowed. So we think these these kinds of improvements will actually limit not only the physical improvements that Steve's talking about, but just the the character of the neighborhood will be more well-developed and advanced so that it won't lead to that kind of criminal activity.
Okay. Thank you.
The other thing that I wanted to say was that they said that the traffic opening into the parking lot would be from Slauson. Is that correct? Off of Crandall? Okay. And I just wanted to know if they were aware that there's a manufacturing business right on Crandall there off of Slauson that has a vast amount of tractor-trailers that are on that block? And how will that possibly impede more traffic to the street?
I don't know, but I think they could they could probably check on that.
Okay.
I'm I'm going to ask them to check on that if they can before the next time we talk, because I think we're going to be talking again in a month.
Okay.
I'm assuming.
All right. And then my final thought was with the first floor commercial in front of Clinton and then the sides Jarvis and Hudson to be residential, I disagree with that. I think the whole first floor should be all commercial space based on the safety for the tenants in the building. I know we want to revitalize it, but I think we should start slow. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody else up there, so. Yep.
The residential on Jarvis and Hudson will only be accessible from inside. They won't have street access. Correct.
Yes, that's that's correct, yeah. The other, I think one other thing to note is just at Jarvis Street, there's a bit of a grade differential based on where the building will be and where the actual roadway is too, so.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to assume you have some thoughts on security for the windows and whatnot on the residential sides.
I think a lot of the points that were made about the improvements in the neighborhood are are part and parcel to the thing. There will be some out there. There will be additional lighting provided to the site as well, and often we provide landscape barriers as well that'll help kind of buffer the residential windows from from sidewalks and things like that. So all those things should help.
Yeah, we've had, we've had a a few applicants for this kind of occupancy in the past and with the right kind of setup, it can work. And so we're we're looking forward to hearing which which all are planning. There's nobody else here, so at this point, I'm going to jump on what Tito was talking about and make a motion recognizing that the Planning Commission has stepped up as the lead agency for seeker. And I would like to move to to recognize that that action. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. And at this point, I think I would like to maybe propose to would we table or leave it open?
You'd make a motion to table the case and just, and just for the record, the public hearing, public hearing will be left open.
Okay. Then I will like make that motion to leave the public hearing open, but to table this case until next month, which will be what date? Do we know?
On the eleventh.
June eleventh. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. We look forward to seeing you next month. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Great. Do we have any other business before the report?
We do not.
All right, then I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.